Seven thirty. We have a quorum, so we're going to get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin work session for Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So today is March fifteenth. Not just the Ides of March, but also Equal Pay Day, marking the date to which, on average, women need to work beyond the end of the year to earn as much as men did on average in the year of two thousand and twenty-one. This is a stark reminder of the existing pay gap between men and women, a gap that is even wider for women of color. On a positive note, March fifteenth is the earliest we have ever marked Equal Pay Day, meaning that year after year, we continue to make progress, moving in the right direction to close that gap. This Women's History Month lets do the work necessary to achieve gender equity by fighting discrimination and investing in childcare, home healthcare workers, and other barriers women face to join and stay in the workforce. For those of you in the Village of Briar Cliff Manor, you have exactly an hour and a half until nine P M. to cast your ballot in the village election. So head over there now. You can catch us on YouTube later. Voting is happening at the W J V Community Center adjacent to the Briar Cliff Manor Public Library. There are two vacant seats on the Village Board of Trustees that are who are on the ballot or which are on the ballot. It's so important to make sure your voice is heard in local elections. Congratulations are in order for Austin residents Anna Guzman and Diana Lemon, who will be honored with State Senator Elijah Reichlin Melneck's Women's Leadership and Empowerment Award later this month. We are lucky to have incredible women leaders in our community, some of them sitting right around the Zoom Zoom table. And Anna and Diana are two phenomenal women, very deserving of this recognition. The next installment of the Austin Public Library's Talk Culture Literary Book Club curated by Barbara Robinson will be this Saturday, March nineteenth at three P M. March's book selection is Letter to My Daughter and the Complete Poetry by Maya Angelou. Grab your copy at the circulation desk. You have three days to speed read it. I challenge you. Be sure to register on O P L's online calendar. I think they're also having a book and craft sale this weekend, if I saw that correctly. Victoria Cafarelli, you can maybe pick up some yarn for your knitting. Looking forward to whatever you're going to make next. Very exciting. The Austin Downtown Revitalization Initiative Call for Projects is open through March thirty-first. Community organizations and businesses can apply for projects to win part of the ten million dollars allocated to the Village of Austin's downtown in this year's cycle. We have a link to the Call for Projects on the town's website in my supervisor's update under Other Government Updates, and you can find more information on the Village of Austin website, W W W dot Village Austin dot org. And now for our work session agenda this evening. First up, we have a special guest from Sustainable Westchester, Nick Tedrow, with an update on the Westchester Power Community Choice Aggregation Program. This program, which the town joined when it started in two thousand and fifteen with the all green energy option, has been particularly beneficial to town residents in recent months, with Con Ed rates skyrocketing while the C E C A rates are fixed. We're looking forward to hearing more from Paul and continuing our support of this program this year. I'm sorry, Paul. I said, Paul, because that's what I was expecting, but it's Nick. Nick, take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for having me here to talk to you about the C C A. I'm actually a Austin Village resident, so good to be talking to my neighbors here. So I'll be quick here, just do a quick background on who we are, what the program is about, and where we're looking ahead and let you know about, and hopefully get your support on in the coming months. So they were Westchester. We're a consortium of municipalities here in Westchester County, and we have a variety of different program offerings. And obviously, we're here to talk about Westchester Power. So a little plug here also, actually, before we get into Westchester Power stuff, we are getting ready to roll out, hopefully, opt-out community solar credits. So this is going to be a new exciting offering that we're going to be providing through Westchester Power program. That will be able to provide guaranteed savings to participating households and businesses prioritizing in the initial stages low to moderate income households. You know, so, you know, looking particularly maybe at folks who are enrolled in utilities, low income assistance programs like HEEP and are generally classified as assistance program participants. So this is something just to be aware of that's, you know, coming down the line here immediately, and you're going to hopefully get some email information sent to you from the solar team. So you see Leo's contact information there, and you can reach out to him directly if you have questions, and then just, you know, if this is something on your radar and you're interested in it. So you'll have to amend your local C C A enabling law in order to add the solar credit to the supply offering. So we'll have a template of that as well. Anyway, Westchester Power, twenty-nine of the forty-four participating municipality or member municipalities participate in our C C A with Yonkers joining this month, actually, make it the twenty-nine total and really bring our customer residential small business account number up to, you know, close to a hundred fifty thousand. So it's pretty amazing. You know, in a snapshot, we are the flagship energy program of Sustainable Westchester. We provide a hundred percent New York State renewable energy at competitive prices, and we are a program that affects only your electricity supply, not the other parts of your bill, like the delivery, gas, delivery, and billing still managed by Con Edison as you'll read the record. So, okay, in case anyone doesn't know how energy works here, a very basic snapshot, it has to get generated somewhere. So typically and predominantly, that's been installed as to date. From fossil fuel sources like coal or things like that, it gets deposited into the electricity grid wherever it's generated from, and then a lot of that is managed, that delivery and maintenance by your utility and delivered to your home, where you have the choices about where your energy is sourced and your ability to support clean energy, which is what we do here. And you see our little hydro plant graphics represent our hydro power sourcing through our program. And again, this is an opt-out format. This is something that's come up again a lot recently with our rollout in Yonkers particularly. So structurally, it's the same as, you know, Con Edison works for folks who, you know, sign up, set up their account, then they automatically start getting Con Edison's supply without any options. So in contrast to that, this program has been vetted and adopted by your local municipality. So your representatives have voted. I guess it's mostly the representatives here I'm talking to. So, you know, this is a difference in that, you know, it's the actual community choice, and you have a choice for the first time. So, you know, and as mentioned, we're bringing cost-effective means of accessing renewable energy for community members who that's important for. And then, yeah, the opt-out structure has really enabled us to go out and secure these really competitive price contracts by being able to leverage that fine cloud of all of our participating municipalities. It's been a successful model thus far in terms of impact with G H, yeah, greenhouse gas impact, countywide through the program, one point one millions metric tons of C O two mitigated, Austin town seventeen thousand of that, and you can see the corresponding estimated impact translated into more tangible terms people can grasp on to beyond or more so than metric tons of C O two mitigated. That was an E P A as a calculator that we use to give you these figures. So we're having a great impact, and progressively that just stacks on as we continue to move through time, and we're really, you know, helping with Austining support, lead the charge in the state on making huge gains towards our G H G emission production goals. So the current contract and where we're at here now, coming upon the end of, I should say, these are, our current rates are fixed through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. This contract started in January of two thousand and twenty-one. The renewable supply and the standard supply have the fixed rates, as you see here, seven point four one per kilowatt hour and six point seven five cents per kilowatt hour. And as the supervisor mentioned, you know, particularly now with where rates have gone because of the energy market and all the geopolitical factors and other things going on that are pushing prices for a lot of things up. The energy market is really facing a lot of upward pressure. So we do feel, you know, fortunate to have this conservative model that offers this fixed price and has, you know, hopefully for participants in the program, been able to shield a lot of folks, a lot of volatility that all of us experienced, our bills at large over the last couple of months. So we think these are going to be really valuable rates while they last for the next few months, given where things are headed in the market. And that's, yeah, I referenced the variable rate there. Con Edison is purchasing a portion of their supply on a rolling basis as we go through time. So they're, you know, very exposed to the market as they fluctuate. They have to. And then, yeah, again, the Con Ed supply is just a market offering that's standard, the cheapest they can get, basically. So that is predominantly a fossil fuel base and not the hundred percent renewable energy. So, you know, particularly encouraging with things right now, at least the program to say, okay, seven point one four one cents per kilowatt hour for renewable has turned out to be a really reasonable and successful outcome for this current contract over the course of the last year plus. So. And again, it's a consumer-friendly program. This program is for folks to join, opt-in, opt-out as much as they want, which supplies as much as they want, and that fixed rate that we mentioned provides a lot of security and assurance of a huge value add that we now see more than ever. So the rates today, I know this graphic is not exactly the easiest to consume, but it goes from our inception back in two thousand and sixteen all the way to twenty February, two thousand and twenty-two. Basically, what it's showing here is we've been, you know, on the average, really competitive, I think, actually a little bit better than Con Edison since our program's inception. So we hope to continue and continue to do even better on that front going forward. And then just one more, you know, snapshot of the current contract rate performance, what I was just mentioning, these estimated values, so average accounts for usage for accounts on the residential and small commercial for Austining Town since January first of last year. You can see a breakdown of, you know, how our costs shake out compared to Con Edison on average for a period. So, yeah, even the renewable, our premium product, so to speak, has been very cost competitive and better on the average than Con Edison would rate. So that's where we're at now and where we're headed. So why I'm, excuse me, why I'm here to talk to you is to, you know, discuss the impending contract end in tandem with what we're envisioning here at Sustainable Westchester and the next evolution for the program, we'll recall Westchester Power two point O. And the strategies we have to really take our program and increase the impact environmentally and economically for our residents in our county. So, you know, in a nutshell, this is basically focused on in the immediate term, for sure, increasing the supplier that we have, you know, even more enhanced competition for our contracts than we've, we've had to date. You know, bringing more, more suppliers into the mix so that we can really, really have competitive auctions for our supply. So then a long time with that, building structures, so continue to build out what we have now foundationally here on the administrative side and what we're able to do and doing some capacity building will support us in locking into longer-term contracts and add in more things, craft more things in the program. Like different dynamic rate offerings and really just make us a more flexible organization and program. And then all of that will lead to longer-term price stability, hopefully, and, and again, you know, increase partners, increase opportunities to actually do actual renewable constructions in the county and, and actually, you know, bring more direct green supply into our communities. Do these advanced enhancements, what we're trying to do. So currently, how we've operated to date, this right side of the screen, you know, Westchester Power one point O, we are working directly with ESCO. So we run our auction, ESCOs, who are the only ones in New York State that have the authority to actually supply retail customers, come to the auction and, you know, bid on our supply, and we award a contract basically based on price more often and go from there. This is a bit limiting because, you know, one ESCOs having the authority, only authority, excuse me, to supply retail customers limits the pool from the actual suppliers as not all wholesale electric producers are actually ESCOs. For one reason or another, that doesn't fit their business model, and it's not an appealing, you know, role for them to play. So there's a lot of wholesale generators out there who don't act as ESCOs, and they're what we can't work with in our current model. So and on top of that, we want to work with an ESCO who's of a, you know, reputable size and can ensure, you know, with our huge customer load that we have, you know, is going to be able to deliver all of what we need. So there's a lot of, you know, pressures around that to really expand the supplier market out there for ourselves, especially when we have a volatile market and upward pressure and a lot of things being squeezed. So the idea with two point O is that we want to tap into the wholesale market and solicit bids for more energy providers, those wholesale providers. So, you know, what we're thinking is we have a vendor who's available to us, who can act as sort of a sleeve, so to speak, for wholesale energy suppliers. So basically, what they bring to the table is all of those functions associated with being an ESCO and the ESCO authority to take energy, which is the large bulk of the whole cost of an ESC package anyway, is that energy block, but then there are these other auxiliary costs and other pieces associated to the ESCO service. So if we have the ability to sleeve an ESCO or rather a wholesale supply contract on this firming contract with our vendor, we could perhaps be opening up a door to even more competitive pricing by going and getting in directly into the wholesale market. And, you know, very least, we're getting a peek under the hood. We're seeing more about how the market operates and understanding more about the direction we can go with that. So what that would look like, you know, in theory, on a first go around, as we develop this, we could still run our traditional retail ESCO auction. So, you know, we talked to the same players, do things as we have done in the past. And then we'd also run a wholesale auction on the same day, and then folks who are entities that are interested in bidding just on the wholesale block will come, and that'll, in theory, bring more energy suppliers into the mix here to bid on that energy block in particular, and then we can compare. We know what our costs would be. They'd be fixed and known for that sleeving service from our vendor provider, so we could analyze our full ESCO biz that we get from the normal auction, and then also compare, you know, what pricing we're getting from the wholesale auction, adding in the cost for the vendor services, and then select what the best option is there. So we think this will actually bring a lot of value to, you know, what we're doing here and adding a lot of cost competition to what we're servicing. So, you know, we've never done it before. It's something we're looking to do. Maybe, you know, there's a chance it doesn't, it doesn't add much value, and still the best offers we get are on the, you know, retail ESCO side, but at least, you know, we are doing some things that are moving us in a direction to become a little bit more dynamic and understand the market a bit more. So what that brings us to here is a proposal we have about going for a five-month extension on the current contract that we have with Constellation New Energy. So I'll also mention, you know, again, there's this market volatility out there. So what that has caused is a lot of unknown for suppliers and providers. So there's a price that's fixed into the indicatives and what we see in the market with uncertainty. There's, there's, you know, that's, that's costed into these prices right now. And so, you know, hopefully with an extension, in addition to allowing time for us to set up this new system and try to run this new auction and get, get off the ground with that and on the path of all these things we've talked about. We can also maybe kind of weather the storm on what's going on in the market and have, you know, a little bit more of a stable situation with pricing in the market when we get through five months. So that's what we're proposing here, sort of our two main points about wanting to do an extension. So the timeline for that right now, you know, I mentioned to the supervisor, Dan Welsh, the director of the program, sent some information out priming people to supervisors and administrators about what we're offering here, everything I just talked at length about, and proposing a meeting to kind of sift through all the details, you know, issues, and put us on a target to, you know, agree upon an M O U price. So right now, we're working with, going to be working with Constellation, getting those indicatives, figuring out where the market's at and what we can get a contract extension for. It's not going to be these great rates we have now because that's out of line with where the market is, unfortunately. So we will be having to get a new price to can, a new, a new price not to exceed, and then that means we have to go through this whole compliance again, since the price is changing and do a mailing. So that means we'll hopefully, and we're in a tight, constrictive timeline right now, so hopefully, participation, you can get all the municipalities to authorize, board signed on by early mid-April, sign contracts with Constellation immediately after that. And then, again, we go through the mailing and doing an opt-out. So residents, small business owners will get those letters, letting them know what the new terms are and the five-month thing, et cetera. And then we'll go July one with the extension, and then on the right side here, the timeline for a new contract, where we'll be immediately working on getting that all ironed out and moving forward. And then hopefully by September, November, locking into a long-term contract. That's hopefully, you know, really awesome for the program and everybody. So I threw a lot at you. I don't know if I use more than my time, so I'm sorry about that. But I'll stop there and question.
Hey, thank you, Nick. That was great. Very detailed explanation of Westchester Power and C C A, and we appreciate that. And all the good work that Sustainable is doing to keep us, or Westchester Power is doing, to keep us as close to those good rates as possible. We know that they're definitely not going to be lasting beyond the contract at this point in time, but hopefully, you know, we can get to some balanced situation. Do any of my board colleagues have any questions for Nick about the C C A, about Sustainable Westchester? The contracts moving forward, the M O U that we're going to be required to sign, or the updated, the adjustment to the, to add the solar credit?
Um, I'd like to be able to see everybody, but um.
Share in the screen for a second.
So.
The opt-out is for the municipality, or is that take away the option for any one of our residents to opt out if they so choose?
They over time, I'm sorry.
The opt-out is for people to be able to, like, in other words, I think.
So I mean, at the end of that, at the end of that last slide, it was, you know, we're going to be signing the memorandum, or we're going to be, you know, and then at the end it said, you know, the end of the opt-out period, does that mean for us to opt out of the whole program or for our residents to be able to opt out of the program?
Yeah, watch the notice about the new contract terms for individual account holders to opt out if they don't like the sound of the new terms, and they can get it out and, you know, before that launches. They can still opt out anytime, even if they don't do it in the opt-out period, but that's just an initial phase that they have the opportunity to opt out before the new rates begin. Otherwise, you know, they could just come back the next month to do it. So if Austining didn't want to participate, you wouldn't sign the M O U in the first place.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have one question too. Hi, Nick. Thanks for the presentation. Great. Just wondering, what is our potential, potential electric customers, and how many people opted out last year?
Oh, I should have Austining numbers. Let me see. I think I do actually on a tab.
If not, you could always email it later. No big deal. I just would like to see.
Yeah, I don't have the opt-out rate in front of me for sure, but I can tell you the count numbers.
Just to know how far off we are as far as people not signing up for.
Yeah. What was it, a hundred and forty-seven thousand out of a million residents in, I mean, that's, I guess.
Well, there was twenty-nine total municipalities and a hundred and forty-seven resident.
Yeah, it's not a lot. It's not, not a lot of people are in it. It, we should, it should be much more.
Yeah. And also, I think maybe on the bill, where do you find what they have? Because some customers, maybe some residents don't know what they have, and where would they look for that?
Yeah, on the electricity supply section of their Con Edison bill. So it's the second page, I think, where they get into the breakdowns of the electric and gas, and it should be in the top left. And underneath the breakout of all the charges and the total, it'll say, it'll look like you have an ESCO to say Constellation New Energy. But underneath that, it'll say, you know, hey, you're part of Sustainable Westchester's Westchester Power Program based on Mount Disco. There's the contact info, and that would be the indication along with our rate, our fixed rate, that they're in the program. So it would be pretty clear if they looked in that section and read through it, whether they were in the program or not. So I am seeing Austining Town, twelve, you know, a little over, what is this, oh, almost thirteen hundred participants in the program. That's between the renewable and the standard. So twenty-one people actually participate in the standard, and then the other twelve fifty-four are renewable. And then actually, there's a hundred and almost fifty small commercial accounts.
Good.
That's not correct, seventy-six.
Seventy-six, so.
Close, very close.
I was adding two months together. Yeah.
Okay.
From, from December to January, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, somebody, it looks like there was one opt-out from the small commercial grouping from December to January. Seventy-seven to seventy-six.
I would think they would be regretting that now.
Maybe. They might close shop, who knows? But yeah.
Did you have a question? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. Okay. Oh, okay, scratched your head. So.
How many do the village have? Do you have that in front of you now?
Yeah, that'll just take me a second. I haven't added the village numbers up, but if you have two minutes, I can do it.
That's all right. It's, yeah.
I mean, I have to follow up with it. My, my email, I'll just chat it to you right now. You can ask me, you can, or do I have that ability?
No, I can't.
It's N I C K at sustainablewestchester.org, pretty easy. So, yeah, it wouldn't be hard to. I should know that. I'm a village resident. I don't know why. That's not just in my brain.
Okay. So anybody else have any questions? I mean, again, I think right now it's a great time to opt in if you haven't, and you can get the fixed rate that's being offered. It's only through June, but save you a couple bucks till then. And, you know, we're not always on the bottom side of that graph. Sometimes we're a little bit above, and there, there was a period of time, like over a year, I think, that rates were a little bit higher. Again, the best thing, in my opinion, about this is driving demand. When we aggregate all of the customers who are in the program and we're negotiating large amounts of energy supply, you know, we can, we can call the shots a little bit more. And many of the municipalities do have the renewable only option, hundred percent renewable. And that's great because it really does send a message to our energy suppliers that we need more renewable energy as part of the grid. So that's, that's an exciting part of it. And then, of course, you know, the impact on the environment is, is, is good based on our community aggregated power. And as, and also, as mentioned, obviously, the price is nice right now. So for all those reasons, we are, I think, looking forward to most likely sign on the dotted line next time. Obviously, we're going to have to see how the negotiations go, but I think we have to do that in advance. And it's always tricky and interesting. I think it'll be very interesting to see what happens if we are able to do this wholesale, act as, you know, a wholesale purchaser instead of, like, you know, just purchasing from an ESCO. And we'll see what happens, but it should, it should be interesting. Always looking for new, new opportunities to do better.
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited about it. Five thousand village residents, almost.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're one of them. Thank you very much. If there's no more questions, I think we're going to say thank you, and we will be hearing from you for whatever the needs are. And also, we would very much be interested in that, you know, the solar credit program and what we need to do with our local law to amend it.
Okay, yeah. I'll make sure to pass that info along to the solar team and make sure we get it in your hand.
All right, wonderful. Did I, did I miss any of my board colleagues? Are you good?
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right. Take care. Thank you.
So next up, we have the wonderful R Comptroller Dale Brennan, who is here and joined by our Deputy Comptroller Elizabeth Macari. And we are going to. And we are going to hear a departmental report, um, to hear a little bit about how our books are looking as we are looking to close out twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Ms. Brennan, take it away.
Thank you, Town Supervisor. Uh, good evening, Town Board. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, Victoria to pull up, um, the first schedule onto the screen, um, which is our, um, mortgage tax revenues. To, to kick it off. Um, I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants because I cannot log on to my computer at work. So, this is going to be, uh, uh, from, from the memory, so to speak. Um, so every, um, every year in, in two installments, the town receives, um, mortgage tax revenues, based on, uh, sales and refinances. And as we know, for two thousand twenty-one, the market is definitely hot and that is reflected, uh, in our received amount. So, for the two thousand twenty-one year, we had budgeted, uh, between the general fund and then a small portion goes to the TOB fund. Five hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. We actually received, uh, one million forty-five thousand, six forty-eight fifty-six, um, which gave us, uh, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three sixty-seven over our budget amount. The portion of that that was general fund was actually four hundred and twenty-one thousand. Uh, so that was helpful, uh, to the general fund, um, to offset. Uh, we had a small, well, not quite small, about two hundred and twenty thousand uh, that we had to reduce our tax revenues by, uh, in order to feed the liability for uh, allowance for uncollected taxes. Um, so this helped to, to offset, uh, that change uh, in the revenue line. Uh, if we go to the next, uh, schedule, which is sales tax revenue. So definitely, uh, an upswing from, uh, two thousand twenty. We kept the budget the same uh, for two thousand twenty-one, um, budgeting seven hundred and fifty thousand and receiving one million, uh, three twenty. Uh, so the excess over budget was five hundred and seventy thousand. So sales tax revenue, uh, all of that revenue goes to the, uh, town unincorporated fund. Um, so that helps offset costs that were not anticipated or revenues that didn't materialize. And, uh, anything extra will go back to fund balance, which, uh, brings us to the next schedule, Victoria. Okay. So for presentation purposes, I probably shouldn't have kept all those years on there. Are, are you able to zoom into the, the, the right side more, Victoria? Uh, but then we lose our funds. Um, but I'll, I'll speak to, to the funds. Um, so essentially fund balance is, uh, what occurs at the end of the year, uh, taking the prior year ending balance. It will then, um, add revenues and then deduct expenditures to give you a new fund balance number at the end of the year. Uh, so if you look at the two thousand twenty-one column and the two thousand twenty, at the end of two thousand twenty, for the general fund, we had three point four three three million dollars. Uh, we were able to, uh, add to the fund balance, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, what made that, uh, materialize were our revenue, uh, amounts uh, coming in were four hundred thousand over the budgeted amount and our expenditures, uh, were under uh, the budgeted amount by three hundred thousand. Uh, so that essentially then goes back, uh, to fund balance to support the town going forward. Sometimes we'll use it for special projects. Uh, we like to not use it towards filling a budget gap. Um, because eventually if you rely on that, then it, it runs out. Um, so we do use it for, uh, project specific. In two thousand twenty-one, uh, we had budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand of fund balance for, uh, the kitchen at the nutrition center. And then, uh, last week, I think it was last week, uh, you approved a, a budget adjustment to fund, um, six thousand toward one of the, uh, parks projects. Um, so those amounts came off of, out of fund balance. So if you go to the, the next fund is the town, uh, unincorporated fund. Uh, so similar, uh, situation there. Our revenues were more than our expenditures, so we're able to put, uh, a little over four hundred thousand, uh, to fund balance. And the highway fund, um, same scenario, uh, with two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Uh, we did have a slight reduction of fund balance in our consolidated sewer fund. Due to, uh, revenues not materializing yet for, um, uh, one of the IBM sewer IMAs, which, uh, hopefully we can sort out in the coming year. We did use a small amount from, uh, refuse and recycling, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then as the board had approved for the ambulance district, uh, we originally had anticipated using fifty thousand of fund balance, um, to help with, uh, the COVID vaccinations. Um, at the end of the day, when revenues and expenditures, uh, came to their hopefully true numbers, we haven't been audited yet. We only used thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. So any questions?
I can certainly email those, uh, schedules to the board since it was kind of hard to see that. And take a closer look.
We could cut off a few years.
Sorry. Dale, I was just wondering, why is this, the mortgage tax and the sales tax go from like May, June to December? Where is January?
They, they remit, um, either quarterly or, uh, twice, twice a year. So that, that's when the check actually, um, arrives. So that's, yes, sure.
For your thorough watching over our funds and think you did okay.
I was muted. Okay. So I was saying. There were no other questions. Um, yes, thank you so much. It's, uh, it's great to see that, um, we are continuing to, um, spend less and bring in more revenue. Obviously, um, some of these things are really outside our control, sales tax and, um, you know, mortgage recording tax, but she's about to sneeze. Hey, shoo! Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, so, uh, but it's, it's good news and we always do budget very conservatively for our revenues, which is another, um, you know, I think we've done that for the last few years, even though we knew that the, um, sales tax was likely growing, especially then we had COVID, so we didn't know what was happening with the market and, you know, people were going to keep, people going to be spending money or not. And all of these things are volatile. So for us to continue to budget, uh, conservatively on the revenue side, um, as well as on the expenditure side, um, is, uh, is the best way to ensure that we will have a healthy fund balance and healthy fund balance also helps with our bond ratings. Um, and, you know, we did manage to get a better rate, Moody's rating a couple of years ago, um, which helps when we do want to go out to borrow. We do anticipate, um, wanting to do that, uh, this year, a little bit later in the year for some of our bigger, uh, capital projects, um, that we know that we're going to have to undertake to maintain our infrastructure and our parks and, um, at our spaces. So thanks again, um, Comptroller Brennan for, uh, a great, um, report, which makes us happy. And, um, we'll, uh, hopefully get that IBM bill paid and, uh, sorted out in the near and not too distant future. So.
And I thank you. One more quick question. Thank you, Liz. Where is the bulk of our, uh, sales tax come from?
Somebody has asked me this question, this question before. And I go back to when, when I had seen, um, uh, um, like an analysis of where sales tax comes from. And essentially it, in terms of how we get it, it's proportion per population, but the biggest, um, contributor to sales tax is actually, uh, automobiles. I'm, I'm always excited to say that answer because it, it always struck me as, who would think, right? You know?
Also, also now I think, right, they, they changed the law for, um, online sales tax so that you're wherever you're buying from, it's coming back to the county.
Right.
Change. So, and the county also increased, the, the county did increase, um, it's I think. Yeah, that happened and that's, that's also, you know, had an impact. I do think everybody is looking at the gas tax and the state and county both, um, you know, play a part in that and additional to being, having a federal gas tax. There, I know there's some conversations about capping or, um, eliminating the, the tax while we see this volatility, um, in the market. Um, so I, I think that, you know, there's some legislation that's been introduced, um, that we will be hearing more about in the not-too-distant future, um, at state level. I'm not sure about the county, but, um, and I don't know if, uh, uh, Councilman Meyer, if you have any more information about that that you want to add or if it's all just kind of up in the air. Right now, I know there's, there's pros and cons to addressing the gas tax, um, in a, in, in that, and sort of a way right now, you know, making sort of adjustments to it, cause obviously, you know, we count on it to offset the, you know, is the cost of doing business, government business, but they, you know, as it goes up proportionally with the price of gas. It's certainly making it more and more difficult for people to make ends meet. We are hoping that we will be less and less reliant on fossil fuels, which would be, um, the best thing and, you know, maybe consider buying electric next time. I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Michio, but I'm hoping that you're going to install a, a, um, electric power station soon, uh, you know, an EV station soon, uh, cause we need, we need one at your place. It's a good, it's a good location.
Good. But just, uh, just to tell you, it is about sixty-two cents on a gallon of gas. And there's six taxes between three for federal and three for state. And that's what it comes up with.
County, not county also?
No, on our, usually on the gas station bills, there's usually three federal and three state, and then there's a prepaid tax that they charge, but that all accumulates about sixty-two cents on a gallon of gas.
Thank you for that. And I don't know, Councilman Meyer, anything to add about, uh, anything the state is considering doing about those three separate, uh, gas taxes?
Yeah, the state, I, I think there's a high likelihood the state is going to put a moratorium on the state tax of gasoline. I think the dates would be May first to December thirty-first. Not finally, it'll be in the state budget, but I think there's a high likelihood of that. Um, and then there was, Angela, I guess you, you know more about this than me, but there was, uh, something being discussed that would give municipalities an opt-out on their share of the sales tax. I don't know exactly what that would.
Yeah, I think what's going to happen would just have to re-apply back to the state for reimbursement. So I think that's the process that, cause they did this in the past when the prices were high, that you would have to pay for it ahead of time and then get reimbursed as a municipality. So if that probably would be the same issue again.
Okay, well, good for a thought for future meetings. And what we can do to help the people at the pump. Solar, solar, no, okay, sorry. Um, we know, we, we do know that that's, that's, that's certainly a large part of the problem. So it's a joke, but not that big a joke. Um, okay. So anyhow, speaking of the environment, um, if, I think we might be done with, um, with Dale and Liz. And thank you very much for joining us this evening. And, um, on to a discussion about balloon legislation. Uh, we know how tempting it is to send things off into the sky or into what seems like the vast Hudson River. It looks so pretty, especially when we are wanting to commemorate or celebrate or memorialize loved ones or events. However, uh, these things that we send off, balloons, lanterns, candles, I don't know everything. It seems eventually it come down or fall down, um, and litter our earth and our river and our waterways. Uh, Councilwoman Feldman has been doing a lot of research on how local governments and even states across the county, a country discourage balloon releases um, and other types of releases, especially along waterfronts as they are detrimental to the environment. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Feldman, who is now our resident balloon release expert to share with us her research. And, uh, we also are joined by Suzie Ross from Sustainable Westchester, who may want to add in some of what she's learned. Um, and then we'll have a little bit more of a discussion about what we might want to do moving forward. Councilwoman Feldman, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Anyway, uh, balloon litter has been a pet peeve of mine for quite a while now. Um, every time I'm out on the boat, we have to stop at least once to pull them out of the river. Those of you that have been a passenger on my boat knows that this is expected of you, you know, if you see a balloon, it's your job to go pick it up. Um, I guess some people just don't realize how deadly the balloon litter is to the fish, the turtles, the aquatic mammals and the birds. And the ribbons, uh, attached to them also do a lot of damage, not only to, um, the wildlife that can see it as food, but also to power lines and other, I mean, uh, things. So, I mean, people just don't seem to realize that, you know, when you let it go, whether it goes up or down, it's still littering. So I believe it's time for Austin to do a public education campaign about alternative ways to celebrate or commemorate occasions um, without incurring the damage that balloon waste causes our environment. And I also believe it's time to put in place a ban on the releasing of any balloons in our community with a few, uh, exceptions, you know, scientific research and like. You know, I think we should start with this statement, something like, uh, although the town board or the town of Austin recognizes that balloon releases are common ways to celebrate or memorialize occasions or people, we believe it goes against the town policy of not littering, protecting our environment and being good stewards of our Hudson River. And we should go from there. And there are a lot of things to be considered. So I know a lot of municipalities consider the types of balloons. Um, I'm, I don't think there are any real biodegradable balloons that go away before they're a hazard. So I, I believe we shouldn't have any. There are, um, other things that we may want to consider banning separately, the Chinese lanterns, doves, butterflies. None of these are good ideas. Anyway, there's a lot that goes into it, but basically I think we should have a ban on releasing any sort of balloon into the environment. And it's pretty simple in my mind. So thoughts and discussion.
Uh, well, uh, I, I'll certainly say that I think that, um, we do need to put something in place because we are seeing more and more, uh, people coming to our waterfront in particular. Um, looking at it as, as a place to throw something. Councilwoman Feldman, you do have to tell your, tell me, say your favorite quote that you always say to everybody.
Oh, right. When you let them go, they really don't go to heaven. They don't actually go to heaven. They do land eventually and somewhere.
He tells us to a lot of people, which I find very.
You know, they don't actually go to heaven, right? Like, you know, you, you could find a better way.
Which I really do like. Um, anyway, yeah, I, I, I didn't want to take credit for that because it was, it's so good, but it is true. Um, I think, you know, again, I think people, um, you know, don't do this with any bad intentions. Um, they do it again because it seems like it's a release, um, in many ways, an emotional release. Um, and it's, um, it's a difficult time for people often when they're doing this. Um, uh, cause a lot of times it's, it's really to memorialize more than anything. I think that those are the types of things that we see. Uh, and those are the hardest, probably hardest times when we have to, uh, talks with people, but people often do call our offices, either the village or town office to ask about it. Oh, may I, may I do this? Do I need to? Do I need to, you know, get a permit for this? What, what do I need to do? And, and we don't really have anything to give them guidance right now. Uh, I think, you know, it makes sense for us to come up with a plan to give guidance. I do wonder about, you know, what, what, what this might look like if it were, in fact, a local law versus some kind of a policy or, or some sort of a resolution, um, just like many of our, uh, well-intentioned, um, local laws. You know, we don't want it to end up being something that's, that makes it difficult for, creates difficult situations for people. But it's certainly an opportunity for us to figure out how, um, you know, to move forward in terms of signage, education and, um, you know, really letting people know that this is something that, as a town that we believe isn't something that people should be doing. So again, I think that there's a number of different, um, things that we should consider. And I think our council, uh, has given us a, a little bit of a guide, guidance sheet for us to think about the different pieces that might go into either a town law or a policy. And, um, go from there. I, I'm curious to hear from our other, um, town council members, how you feel about this.
One quick thing, um, I also want to have a booth at the Green Austin Festival, Earth Day Festival that shows alternate options. So there are several options, you know, rather than balloons, you can have a candle. You can have this wish paper that you, you know, light and it floats, you know, very short distance. You can have streamers instead of balloons that don't actually float up into the air and can be collected easily. You can, uh, use bubbles. There are a lot of different things that you can do that, that aren't as bad for the environment or bad for the environment at all. So I think we, having a public education, education campaign in conjunction, with, I mean, to me, balloon releases littering. So I, I think it should be in that section, but anyway, couldn't, sorry, continue.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great thing to take on, um, particularly with our location right on the Hudson River. So anything I could do to support, I'm all for it.
Okay. And Councilwoman Minicio, where are you?
Well, like myself, I think the education process is good. I mean, whoever knew that balloons could cause all this? Thank you, Councilman Feldman, for bringing me up to speed with that. You know, you see it firsthand on the, on the river there. Uh, just, I want to protect the people that, you know, graduations are big balloons things and they don't intend to release them, but say they one goes, you know, just talk about it. Let's see what come up with good ideas. And I think education will go a big part in this. So I, I'm in for it too.
And we have Suzy Ross, uh, before we continue our conversation, did you want to add anything to this?
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm thrilled, Liz. Thank you so much for being a champion behind this. I think you've done a lot of research. I think there are a lot of options out there. A public service campaign is, is, is important. Signage is going to be important too. I do think that we, uh, get Riverkeeper to get behind this as well. And I think it says a lot about our community to be forward-thinking about something that not every river town is thinking about. And I, I feel like there's a great opportunity here for, um, this to be adopted by other communities with Austin leading the way. There are, there was a, a balloon release, um, over the past year. I think that really was one of the reasons that Liz and I had started talking about various different options. And so on one side of, you know, the coin, you're thinking about balloon releases and what they do to the environment. And we know, we know that if you're, if you've looked at any of the research, or if you've listened or seen anything, you know, in, in terms of the real effects when you're collecting them on the top of the river, um, or up, uh, you know, around the shoreline when we do the sweep every year. But there is actually something far better than that. As we know, some of the things that we found, like planting seed cards or having an area perhaps, perhaps because the shoreline is so important to our community when it comes to celebrations. Perhaps there could be things along Engel Park where we might have an area where people can memorialize situations with seed cards. It might be something you might consider giving out on Earth Day. If this is when you wanna actually make a statement about this new law perhaps. And those seed cards can be planted anywhere. They don't all have to be at the river, but it's a way to actually for people to write something down, plant something and have it be far longer lasting than a balloon release. So, um, we're, you know, we're happy to help with any outreach and any, um, promotion about this. And again, I do seriously applaud the town for taking this on. And, and because it really is not something that, I mean, I think, Liz, in your research, it's not something that we've seen any municipality really up and down the Hudson take on. Um, I don't know if any have. So, um, I'm always pretty proud of, of Austin when we are able to be the first out at things like this. It's, it's bold, but I think it's really important. And I think with education and options, this should be, you know, a very quick win.
In the conversations I've had with, um, both Austin and Berkeley Mayor's, they, uh, village mayor. So they are interested in joining us as, uh, is the county. And, uh, I saw our county executive, uh, at a function the other day. And he said that Casper and had brought it, um, back to the table and that he would absolutely sign it, um, if and when it gets to him. So I think we may have the county, uh, joining us in this and that would be great.
That'd be really great.
But first steps.
Yeah. So I don't know if we wanted to turn it over to Council Tom Adana, to just take us through, um, maybe what it would take to put together either a policy or a local law. But I know that you had some, some items for consideration. Are we, um, talking about banning just balloons or also other items like Chinese lanterns, doves and butterflies? Is that something we're banning the release of? Or, I mean, I'm not exactly sure. Are we just gonna stay focused on balloons for this particular local law? And that would be something for us to consider. I'm not exactly sure about the doves and butterflies, how that all works. Maybe I missed that.
Yeah, if anything, I'd put the, the Chinese lanterns in with this law if possible. Um, or separately, just because the fire hazard they present. That's a thing.
Yeah, I, I don't. If I could say anything that we are, we're basically tossing things into the environment and not having any idea where they end up landing. So it's going to be garbage somewhere. And to me, that's a detriment to the environment. I think we should have, if we're gonna do something like this, the balloon releases obviously are probably done much more frequently, perhaps where we live than they are in other communities, maybe. Um, I don't know. The doves and the butterflies, I, I don't think I've ever seen that happen. But I, I think that anytime we're just taking something that naturally doesn't occur and releasing it into the environment, and we have no idea where it ends up. I just, I think we should be treating the environment and nature with a lot more respect than that. So, um, I'd say go for it. Just toss it all in. No releases of any kind, period. Let's plant things.
Yeah.
Of course, not, not invasive things.
Um, our, I mean, release, I don't, I, I mean, I get, it's a little complicated. Like what's a release? I don't, Christie, do you wanna?
Well, and that's, yeah, I mean, so what I prepared for the board that I circulated last week is, I took all of the great information that, um, Councilwoman Feldman had circulated. And I, I went through it and tried to kind of identify some themes or concepts, that were common in all of the different laws from all different levels of government around the country. Because, uh, you know, for, whether it's a policy or a law, um, I think that may factor into how the board wants to approach this. Um, so that may be, you know, a preliminary step because, um, as the supervisor was saying, and one of my suggestions at the end of my list was, um, to see if the police chief would have any thoughts or input on this because, um, enforcement is going to be the challenge with something like this. So whether you decide, try to do it as a policy, um, or for guidance and education purposes, like we're discussed, versus a law may also influence how the law is drafted or how the board feels about it. So, um, that may not be the case, but that's just kind of my perspective on it.
Okay. I mean, some of the things in some of the laws that made sense to me, um, let's see. A balloon release for scientific or meteorological purposes, on behalf of a government agency or present to government contract, a hot air balloon, or one that is released and remains indoors. And one of the ones I liked was, um, an accidental release by somebody thirteen years of age or younger or an accidental release, um, all are. You know.
As except, as exceptions to the prohibition.
As exceptions to the prohibition. I read the New York State law, proposed law, and that went a little far. I mean, I would put it into, um, probably a littering penalty and not have, you know, per balloon. Some of them go per balloon and they really get kind of crazy. But, I mean, I'm sure we can.
Right now, now is in the, the enforcement discussion, um, if it were to be a law. Should there be a warning first? I mean, in, in practicality, that's probably going to be what happens.
Yeah.
And, and we've seen that with other types of, um, laws that the towns put in places. Instead of giving people policy, uh, tickets right off the bat, it's more about informing them what the law is and, and giving them an opportunity to comply. And then obviously, if it's going to be a law, you would need to, to designate what the penalties are going to be. I, I agree with you, but obviously it's up to the town board. As to whether, you know, if you release fifty balloons at one time, is that considered one offense or fifty offenses? Because that, that really factor into, you know, what the penalties would be within the terms of reasonableness.
And I have a question about that too, because I, I have fifty people and all of them are releasing one balloon. How does that work?
Yeah, I, is there, is there?
Revenue goes up.
Well, is it a coordinated release if everybody just releases one? I mean, one of the things is, you know, some, 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 the laws did have numbers. I mean, you could say one, but you know, obviously an accidental release, but everybody could come with it tied around their wrist and then just kind of, I, I'm just, I'm just like playing devil's advocate for a second. Just like, you know what I mean? Like, there's, people would find, can find ways around stuff. I mean, obviously, you know.
Yeah, people find ways, yeah, people find ways.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Around everything. I think at least if there, it's known that Austin has a law, you know, at least a policy, preferably a law in my view, then maybe they'll plan something else. You know, and it will become known that this isn't the community that looks favorably on that. And, you know, maybe we'll work toward a greener solution.
But I, but I think too, if I might add that, that if you have the education out in front of this, that over time, it's not, um, it's not something that's, that people will be like, oops, I didn't know. I mean, of course, there's always going to be people that are not paying attention to the messaging out there, whether it's on social media or web blasts or anything. Most people don't even know the laws of the town or the village unless they happen to come upon them because they did something wrong or somebody they know did something wrong.
Right, but I think sometimes people come to us to do these things.
Which is perfect.
Local, you know what I mean?
Right, as long as we have.
No, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that. I, I, I said that wrong. They come to Austin because they want to release, maybe they grew up here. Maybe somebody that passed away was from here, but they're not. So a lot of times, like, as much as education as you can do locally, it's not gonna reach the people who, you know, you need to reach. Cause, oh, you know, it's not always people just from Austin who do these.
You mentioned signage though. Didn't you mention signage?
I did.
So if you have signage, signage referencing the law or, you know, the, the signage actually indicates that there's some alternatives that we'd recommend. You know, if they brought a, you know, fifty balloons with them and they looked at the sign, probably, you know, your guess is as good as mine as to what will happen with those fifty balloons. But, um, but, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get everybody to adopt to it right away. And we may not get everyone to adopt to it entirely, but I think we can stop most of it. And that's significant.
Yeah, even a few hundred less balloons, you know, a few hundred less dead, you know, animals would be nice. And I'm really sick of seeing them in the trees. They're everywhere.
So, so that, I guess, one of the other issues that I had identified was, um, the locations where, where this should be prohibited, in the sense I'm getting from the discussion, was that it would be townwide.
That's my mind.
Yeah.
Um, I also just want to note, because Councilwoman Feldman, when you mentioned the balloons and trees, I'm wondering if some of that has to do with people who are renting, um, some of the spaces in our parks and holding parties and maybe, you know, not securing it properly or forgetting to, you know, let's say forgetting, forgetting to bring them with them when they're done with their party. So maybe that's something that we can also ask our recreation superintendent to include as part of the, uh, pavilion rental application or something like that. Even, you know, separate and apart from all of this, just reminding people that if you, it's, if you're at this party, you, you hold a party, remember to bring your garbage with you, bring your balloons with you, make sure you're outside, so keep your balloons secured. That's something that we can probably share, um, you know, just in advance of the season starting.
Yeah, good idea.
So do you want to?
Not actually, sorry, that goes to another point that I had identified is that some of the laws, um, in other states and municipalities, uh, went beyond just the release to the actual sale or use of balloons, um, to, for, you know, but, but that creates, you know, an issue like Gloria was saying where, um, you know, people having a party or they want to identify that they're going to be in a specific area for a party. That, that may be a step too far if the board thinks so. But that, that was just another thing that I had seen in the, in the laws that, that I needed some guidance on.
Personally, I, I don't think we should go to the sale.
Yeah.
Even though I, I'm opposed to balloons, I, I don't think that's what we're trying to take on right now. I think we're taking on the issue of, of litter, uh, in our, uh, parks and public spaces and our, uh, you know, natural environment that we don't want to, uh, contaminate. So I think, uh, to, to your question, um, Christie, I, I think we don't need to get into the sale and use. I think we're just talking about release. Um, I don't think we even want to put a number to it personally. I think we could, you know, have an exclusion for somebody, um, under the age of thirteen. Obviously accidents happen. Um, and I don't think anybody's gonna go chasing kids around who, you know, lost a balloon from their arm. I mean, we can certainly tell, you know, we can say we discourage them being used for events, large events. Because that's oftentimes when these things happen. So, you know, that's something we can certainly say. Uh, I think we should absolutely include the exception for the scientific purposes, manhot air balloons, et cetera. And those remain indoors. And I think the characteristics that are described in most of the, those laws were similar, that filled with gas later than air. Or constructed of electrically conductive material made of non-biodegradable material. Well, I don't think we are, want to include that. I think mostly it's, we don't want people releasing balloons into the air that are going to pretend to go to heaven.
Yeah, and I would, I, I would be careful about making the distinction too, about how, what the balloons are made out of. There is actually, yeah, somebody that opened up shop somewhere that said that they make biodegradable balloons.
Yeah, right.
And somehow that's supposed to make us feel better, but there.
There's not really any such thing.
Don't know of those things, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, they don't degrade before something has already eaten it. You know, or, or it's become a hazard.
Right, so we don't want to include that. We're just saying balloons with, depending on what they're filled with and that's it.
I'm fine with just releasing balloons. I don't like them when they float into, on top of the river with, with air or anything else, but that's just me.
Do people release balloons that don't have helium or something in them?
Not on purpose.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing is that you, you need some sort of intent here.
I think, didn't, didn't Councilwoman Feldman have that opening paragraph? She just read.
No, I mean, like, like, um, intent to, to break the law.
Oh, oh, I see.
Oh, right.
No, not.
The accidental release is not actionable regardless.
Right.
Are we doing anything about water balloons? Or is that included in the, what it's filled with?
It's not really.
It's not a good point though. I mean, maybe, I don't want to complicate matters, but you know, I mean, balloon fights, it's a great summer thing to do on the river in that little patch of picniki area that people. Picnicky area that people. You know, have have barbecues at and everything. I I don't know if there's a way to just integrate the. Um, avoidance of usage of balloons. Period by the river. I mean, what you're doing here is you're raising awareness at the environmental um. Impact. You're not doing it directly by just having a law, but you are for anybody that we educate about it. Um, and so what we do want to do um is to avoid any situation where people may be. Putting any type of trash into the river, cigarette butts. I mean, these are the types of things that we see every cleanup. It's cigarette butts, it's plastic bags. Um, the states obviously helped us with plastic bags, but that for years is was been, you know, is one of the number one things that we would clean up, and we still see them. Floating in trees now because we can't avoid all of them. But um, I think particularly at the river. Um, and you could say that for any area within uh Austin and the town that has wetlands that run into. You know, the estuaries that run into the Hudson River, we still see all kinds of trash. So I think that. If you can avoid, um, if you can, i- if you can somehow or another make it so that it is not lawful to have that type of. Material down at the river, just balloons of any kind. Down at the river.
I just think, I I feel that um, even though I agree with you about all those things, um, that we're trying to do too much in one fell swoop. Um, I think we should try to keep this focused on what our particular issue is, which isn't. All litter. I mean, that is taken up in our littering, um, you know, which theoretically, if you throw a water balloon. At somebody and it and it breaks, and then it leaves. The remains of the balloon and you leave that there, that's littering, right? But what we're talking about in this particular instance. Is releasing of things that memorialize or celebrate, and getting into this whole water balloon issue is kind of. Going in a different direction from what the intent, in my opinion, is of of this, which is talking specifically about when people release these things to either celebrate or memorialize. Um, and I I just think it's complicating it um in a way that isn't going to help our our goal.
Fair enough.
And I'm not, again, again, I don't disagree with you that. But so, so we should tell people that they can't go with disposable cups or bottles of any kind to the waterfront anymore. Um, or drink out of a disposable cup because then they might just leave it, or or a bird might grab it out of the garbage and and drop it someplace else. I mean. I I'm just saying, we can't, we're not going to be able to solve all of the problems of balloons. Problems of litter in this one local law, what we're just trying to do is address the these releases.
I agree then.
Agreed.
So, is that enough information at this point, Christie, for you to? Get something together now? I feel like we went through all of the things on your list.
So, do you want me to just prepare something substantive and then? Have another discussion about in what format the town board wants to move forward with it? I I would still recommend um. Once we have a draft of something, having the police chief look at it. At his input as well.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, what I have is. It's the release of balloons of any number. We're just focusing on the release. Um, it doesn't matter what it's made of, filled with. Um, attached to anywhere in the town, and in addition to the exceptions I had identified. Um, accidental release. Do you want accidental release limited to thirteen and under or accidental release for anyone?
I say thirteen and under.
And the reality is they're going to get a warning, so. But I'm, I'm, I think we should say thirteen and under because it kind of indicates like, you know, if you're an adult and it happened, really. You could have, you probably could have made that not happen.
And then as far as enforcement, um, you know, if it's a policy, it's moot. It's not an issue, and that's something that if it does go the direction of the law, then. The town board can discuss um what you would want to see in in the range of penalties, and that may all be also be something. Um, that the the chief could participate in.
What are our current littering penalties is something I would like to know.
Two hundred or two fifty, is that right?
I I could. Don't have it up right now.
It's okay. I'm sure having it for our next discussion is fine.
Okay, so we do have something else on our agenda. I think we have enough to get started, and again, I thank you so much. Goldman for doing the research and Suzy Ross this evening. And uh, with that, I think we're going to move on to our next uh conversation, unless there's anything else, uh, Christie, that you need from us. Are you good?
I was just pulling up the penalties.
And I really just want to thank everybody for. Uh, for looking at this and for, you know, making a difference for our environment, so.
Thank you from the river. Um, I do think that um whatever you guys do, I I do think that we could find a partner, by the way, in Riverkeeper. In applauding your efforts and and coordinating anything they can to support you, but we will support you in whatever we have to do in terms of. Community education, um, you know, anything along those lines, we'd be happy to help with.
Excellent, and that that is going to be the critical, critically important, and hopefully, if we can get the word out um this Earth Day. Um, you know, we can get it to people more than just the folks from Austin, because we know we get lots of visitors from all over the place. And just to, you know, make be a little bit of a wake-up call for people to think about these issues, um, I think is important, because a lot of people. A lot of times people don't think about them, and again, just do them because it seems nice and don't think about the consequences.
So the rain, it's a range from a hundred to a thousand per occurrence, um, I I suppose. So it's basically. To a large degree left to the deference of the the officer or the courts. Um, and I think it it's probably based to a certain extent upon the range of items that could be at issue. Because it includes. The sort of improper disposal of garbage. Um, it talks about tin cans, metal rags, boxes, newspapers, rubbish, boxes, barrels, you know, so you you could be. If it's a piece of paper versus if it's a barrel.
A tire or refrigerator. All things we find at Gerlach Park. Okay. So, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Stay on what it, you actually have a really nice agenda, all the stuff I'm interested in, but um. But thanks for giving me a chance to weigh in tonight, and thanks for for really leading on this. I think it's really. Um, it it very much paints a very impressive picture of Austin in terms of environmental advocacy, so. I thank you on behalf of all the organizations that fight for the environment and for the river, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Uh, so last week, we held our first night of public hearings on the draft comprehensive plan called Sustainable Austin. After hearing from the public, we wanted to come back to the board to discuss the comments we heard last week and discuss next steps. With planner, our planner Valerie Manostra and our counsel Christie Tomodana. As a quick plug to our audience and anyone viewing this after the fact, the public hearing is very much so open. We encourage members of the public um to participate, to send in your comments. To attend the next public hearing, um, and to review the draft comprehensive plan online, which is. WWW dot sustainable Austin dot com. Um, we have continued the public hearing. Until March twenty second, uh, which is our next town board meeting, and we will be holding um both. In person and virtually that next meeting. So please take some time to review the plan. Especially the objectives and strategy section, and either come by yourself. Um, or bring and or bring your friends to the next public meeting and or send your comments um to us by email. And you can send them to, I believe, TC. At townofossein.com, um, but also there's a way to submit comments through the sustainableossein.com. Uh, website, I think it it, there's another way that'll tell you to send comments, um.
Put them to the clerk's office. S Donnelly at town.
Yes, the PC was down um recently. We did just check it. It was working from some emails, but not all emails, emails, so we are working.
Yeah, I had a a resident contact me today saying, why didn't, why did it bounce back? I said, we're working on it.
Uh, okay, so with that, um, I would ask the board if there were any particular comments. Or discussion that you wanted to have on any of the different. Input that we that we received to date. Or anything that you have. To 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 talk about. Regarding the comp plan.
Would it be helpful to kind of um inform the board as to what the next steps are in terms of revisions?
Yeah, I think so. I think that would be great, Christie.
So, so the. Based upon, and Valerie chime in, um, just because I I, the board has heard some comments, um, I think what the uh. What the plan was, and obviously if the board feels differently, we can um certainly adjust it. Was to wait and see if we get any more substantive comments between now and after the public hearing next week on the twenty second. And then ask WXY, which is the town's planning consultants, to go back and start substantively incorporating the comments that we have received. Into the current draft uh to revise it. And then, once that is done, it will be brought back to the board for you to take another look at with those additions and to explore. If you're comfortable with them, uh, the public will also have an opportunity to look at it before um. Our recommendation would be that the public hearing have, the public have another opportunity to look at the revised comp plan. Before considering closing the public hearing. So just for the board's information, um, there will be another round of edits that that you'll have an opportunity to review.
Um, I think that sounds good. I mean, I know that we had a robust discussion at our first work session. Um, we've had some very interesting comments come. Along um, um, as a result of our discussion and also as a result of, um, you know, what's in the comp plan. Um, some of it about missing middle housing and um rate sizing. Opportunities for us to have. Additional housing in the town um that fits in with the. Uh, style and characteristics of of the of the types of buildings that we have here, um, and also supports affordable housing. Um, and um mixed uses and things of that nature. So we did talk a bit about that, um, and I I believe that the um. Those, some of those comments already made their way back to our consultants, and they've already um started to look at. Tweaks that they can make to the comp plan to address some of those comments uh proactively. So I don't know, Valerie, did you want to say anything else about that, or did town, anybody from town board have anything else that they wanted to 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 add or have concerns about?
Um, I just wanted to. Clarify or say that. You know, as we're looking at density in parts of the town, um, you know, the village, I don't want to end up like, you know, a big city like Yonkers. I think we should. Really be careful that we don't. Have it worded where we're open to. Greater density everywhere. I think that the village is adding a lot of density in our transit court, you know, transit. Has oriented density in our in transit corridors. And, you know, kind of the reverse of Manhattan, where you've got green in the middle and, you know, dense on the outside. I feel like we're kind of. Dense, you know, at the village and kind of fanning out to more greener areas towards our parks. And I want to make sure it all flows together nicely, and so we have a little bit of everything. We don't end up just one big city. Or a half hazard. So, you know, the the planning and the discussions about. Where we have our density are important to me.
Right, so and I I think, I think, um, and that's a good segue, Liz, I think one of the things that um is. Has um evolved as a part of this public comment period is that really, to some extent, the. The concerns that have been raised about this missing middle housing really comes from only one, one, um, basically one recommendation in the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, it doesn't identify areas, it doesn't identify zoning districts, it doesn't even identify parcels. All it's really saying is that if. At some point in time, the town decides to look at different zoning options, or, you know, has some sort of zoning petition. Or wants to look at, you know, other housing options that consider the missing middle concept. And we're going to make sure as we revise this, that it's clear that we're not targeting any particular areas in the in the town. We're not targeting any particular zoning districts. We're just really focusing on this overall concept, so that it's kind of. Focusing, you know, your your overall, the characteristics of the community, which is not. High density, you know, large scale housing, but more of ones that would fall within the characteristics. Already existing in the town of Austin. So that's really, that's really the main um. Goal or objective of that particular recommendation, and specifically to allow that kind of flexibility. For the town board to make those decisions in the future.
Thank you.
A lot of sense, great. Uh, anybody else? How many comments?
Well, I I did all that one thing, just, I'm, I would like some more, a little bit of public income uh input. So I've been going around, you know, digesting all this. I've been educated a lot on the middle missed housing now, so. Uh, I feel comfortable with that, but, you know, I just had a little more discussion from the public, and I feel. Once we get this scheduled down, as far as public hearing goes and all that, I think they'll have an opportunity to to. Give everybody in the public a chance to speak in the town.
So the reason why, excuse me. The reason why I brought that up earlier was just because in in the context of your substantive discussion. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood um that that we were still, we are certainly still working our way through that public comment process. And there will be revisions um to the draft that that you will have an opportunity to review, and, you know, at that time, obviously. There will be further opportunity for the town board to to discuss it internally and with the public. But in terms of timing legally and procedurally, um, we still have not heard back from the county planning department. Um, they get thirty days under general municipal law in order to provide us with comments. Um, I confirmed with the clerk's office today that the referral went out on February twenty fifth. So we, the board could not take any action or close the public hearing until that thirty days is up, which is going to be after next week, so. We're certainly, unless the county responds and something changes, but I don't anticipate that. We would recommend that the board leave the public hearing open uh after the March twenty second meeting. Um, this is a good month, actually, in the sense that there's a fifth Tuesday when this board does not meet. So it would give the consultants an extra week um to put together any necessary revisions based upon public comment and any comment from the boards. Prior to this board's work session the first week in April. Um, so the board can consider it again with a revised draft in front of you. You can continue the public hearing at your first legislative session in April, which is April thirteenth. And depending on where we stand then, at that point, thirty days will be up from the county. If they do substantively respond. We'll have to look at those comments and see if they need to be addressed and incorporated. But at that point, that's the earliest I can imagine. That the, if the board were comfortable doing so, that you would be in a position to close the public hearing, and then you would also have the opportunity, if you wanted, to leave it. Open for written comments, say for another week, so that then for your second meeting in April, um, your second legislative session, excuse me, which would be April twenty seventh. If you, if you were in a position to, then you could potentially consider adopting the complaint at that meeting. So that's kind of the tentative timeline that we've kind of been um thinking about a little bit internally. Obviously, it's subject to change. Based upon the substance of any comments from the public or the board, um, but that's, that's kind of the. The the outline that we're thinking about right now.
And can anybody just remind me when we opened the public hearing?
It was opened last, um, at the last legislative session, which was March eighth, but um, there was a. We did a town hall meeting on February fifteenth. Where the board um did also receive public comment on the on the comprehensive plan. Um, and written comment has been also received through the website. The plan itself has been available for public review since February first. And the objectives and strategies, I think, have been available on the website, and we received feedback on those objectives and strategies. Several months ago, I don't remember the exact, exact timeframe. Several months ago, I don't remember the exact, exact timeframe.
Yeah.
Um we did have a survey out, I think, in the fall um on the objectives and strategies themselves, so. There has been quite a bit of public comment.
Bulk of the plan. So um so just to be clear, I mean, basically, we've been, we've been soliciting. Um public comment on the draft plan since uh February and um will have. Uh continuing to continue to solicit public input most likely till um close to either middle or or end of April. Um so quite a few months and we look forward to continued discussion and again, we have our in-person. Um high or slash hybrid meeting coming up on March twenty second. Our next public hearing day. So hopefully that'll be enough opportunity for people to spend some time to to dig in. Um I and look at. Objectives and strategies, which is, you know, you don't need to look at every page of the plan to understand what the recommendations are.
And I think it would also be important to note that the public hearing is always at the top of the town board's agenda. So that you, that always starts right at seven thirty P M. So if members of the public do want to address the board as part of the public hearing. It's important that uh to 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 come on time because sometimes that does uh wrap faster than one might imagine, but of course, it doesn't. Proclude anybody from submitting written comment outside of that timeframe.
I'm just curious one thing, uh Christie, does, after the county approves the plan like they did on February, does that. Tell you to have to do it in a certain time before it's not good anymore, if it expires or runs out?
No, it's it's, there's no, it's a thirty day requirement, basically. Um what they're trying to avoid is a situation that, you know, you send it to the county and then approve it the next day. Um where they they've had no reasonable opportunity to weigh in and provide comment. Um so there's, you have to wait thirty days um to give, you have to give the county planning department thirty days. If they respond earlier. Then it's over. Um but if they, if they don't respond up to and including thirty days, you have to wait the full thirty days. Sometimes they don't respond, um most often they do, and if they, if they determine it's a matter for local determination. Which they may in this case, because I think, I think they recognize um that this is something that's specific to each local municipality. But they may have some substantive comments based upon um some planning policies that they're working on. Valerie may be able to weigh in on this also. But really, it's just a matter of making sure that they have an opportunity um to weigh in and provide their comments if they want to. Then based upon those comments, they may require certain modifications and if the board decides not to. In incorporate those modifications, then the board has to act by super majority vote. Um so that's kind of the the little quirk where you have to see what their responses are, if there's anything substantive. And if there is that you don't agree with, then it requires a super majority vote. Um you know, I I. Anticipate that ultimately the board would vote um by super majority, but but we would have to see what the county is actually proposing if it gets to that point.
I'm gonna say it's very unlikely that this is gonna happen. Um if anything, we're probably gonna receive kind of like. Nice comments from the county. This is great that you do this, at least I think. I don't know, um Valerie.
Yeah, usually, usually though, if if it's, if it's anything, they might um identify a couple policies that they would like the town to consider. But I think for the most part, I think the comprehensive plan itself does meet many of the uh like regional policies that the county's been promoting.
Yeah.
If it, just for um. The intent of this law and this referral process to just make sure that there's kind of regional oversight for what's happening on a local basis. And it's a practice that happens in counties all over the state.
And we also shared the plan with all of our neighbors. So they also have an opportunity to tell us they'd like or don't like something. So you know. Um, okay, I think unless anybody has anything else to add, that we can close this portion of our work session. Are you all okay? Does anybody else have anything else they want to add? Ask. Okay, thank you so much. Um with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of council personnel.
So moved.
I can.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you very much to our planner, to our council, to the entire board, to our receiver of taxes in the audience. Uh for sticking it out and uh we very much appreciate everybody's participation, of course, to to Victoria Caprally for organizing this, especially. On a night when um our computers um during earlier in the day were uh not participating. So uh very grateful for that and for everybody who joined us this evening. We will be back next week with a legislative session that will be held, as mentioned, in a hybrid format. With the town board joining in person. At the sixteen Crotton Avenue Board Room. Members of the public will be able to join us virtually via Zoom or in person. So we'll see you then, sixteen Crotton, can't wait. Do you remember what it, what we really look like in person? I don't know. I don't know, we'll have to see. The rest of us, I think. From uh from waist down, at least. What were you gonna miss? You're gonna miss your.
My river behind me.
Oh, your river, yes. Well, we'll, we'll have to go to the river after the meeting then. Have a green night, everybody. See you soon.